I like my juke.
Very cute.
We're live streaming Melanie. How's Melanie today?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Good. Ready to rip.
Morning, everyone.
How are you doing, Tony?
I'm all ready to go. It's nine o'clock. We have quorum.
Okay, with that, we will call this meeting to order. Are you ready, Director Clark? Yep, okay. We would like to recognize that collectively, we are on the unceded territories of all the First Nations within our regional boundaries. If I have someone move approval of the agenda, please. Moved by Director Birch Jones, seconded by Director DeMare. I will call the question, anyone opposed? Motion carries. And I am going to read the policy from Kristen. The meeting of the board and this committee of the whole is being held virtually with all meeting participants attending by electronic communications in order to adhere to the provincial health officers' orders respecting physical distancing requirements as a measurement, as a measure to prevent the transmission of COVID-19. Directors will be involved in and participate in the meeting. For the closed are to identify themselves when advising the chair that they wish to be placed on the speakers list, and this will be done by raising their hands. The chair will record the order in which the hands are raised and will allow the directors to speak in the order in which they are recorded. If directors are unable to raise their hands due to being in audio mode, they will verbally advise the chair of their intention to speak. Directors will mute their device unless they wish to speak. The chair may also choose to mute the microphones and the directors may unmute as they wish. On their own accord when required. With respect to a vote, directors are only required to state a nay vote. Directors attending the meeting are required to verbally advise the chair if they leave the meeting and when they return to the meeting so that this can be recorded in the minutes. For clarity, if a director does not verbally advise the chair but is observed to be absent from their video feed and their video feed remains turned on and it is unclear to staff when they are present in the meeting, the director will be marked absent from the meeting until such time as staff observes the director to reappear in the video feed. Directors will text message the CAO if they have technical difficulties with their computer or telephone, if they need to be reconnected to the meeting. If directors are unable to text the CAO, the directors will email the chair. If a technical difficulty arises and it becomes apparent that a director has become disconnected from the meeting, the meeting will be recessed until the connection status of the director has been determined at which time meeting will be reconvened with or without the director present, provided the meeting quorum is maintained. Directors who declare conflict of interest in respect of an agenda item will be directed to the virtual waiting room while the board considers the item. Once the board completes its consideration of such agenda item, the director will be readmitted to the meeting. Directors who are present within the virtual waiting room are asked to stay at their computer or otherwise remain present and connected to their computer for the entire duration of their time in the waiting room so as not to miss their readmittance to the virtual meeting room. If possible, any chat function of the application will be disabled. Directors will not use this chat functionality during the meeting. Thank you. Okay. Can I have someone move? Ministerial Order M 192, moved by Director Rainbow, seconded by Director Weeb. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We're going to postpone the regional moment because Jack is not here to give it. We may revisit at the end of the meeting. Let's go on to 5.1 CAO verbal update.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. 5.2 Financial Plan. Here comes Suzanne. Good morning.
Good morning. So are we ready to start the budget?
We are. Thank you.
So I've included the 2021 completed rule in this budget draft. And also the Cedar Sky Trails is included in this and all the five-year plans. The consolidated budget right now shows a 0%, well, 0.3% increase for taxation. I did this purposefully, trying to just keep the tax at the same level, but with all the changes that were made in general government, we were able to then transfer more funds to the reserve. And I did that on purpose to just keep, I kept the level flat to last year. The CPI increase this year is 0.8%. So I've updated the budget to reflect that for all the salaries. Speaking of salaries for general government, with the new positions that the board just accepted last, yesterday, I tentatively quickly this morning just updated the budgets with these new salaries, with the new positions. And if the board wants to review what that change would be now, I can quickly go over that. Unless you want to start just by going into general government and then the items that I changed from last time. What does the board prefer? Should I just jump into those new?
Go ahead, Director DeMare.
I'd like to see the changes now, please.
Okay. So with the new salary positions added in, sorry about that, and the potential also for relocation expenses, I kept those in as well because obviously there's potential that they could be out of out of the area. The 2021 increase for taxation would be $106,720, which equates to, sorry, going back to that sheet, a $2 increase per $500,000 home. The budgets that you're looking at for the agenda package show a 60 cent increase for a $500,000 home. Overall, with all of the board budgets and the adjustment for the new positions, it's an 83 cent increase because there's, you know, reductions in land planning and zoning versus last year and reductions in waste management versus last year. So overall, the taxation increase in 2020 will be minor. And the overall change in the dollar value is 5.8% for all of the regional budgets now. In 2022, because these positions are only partially covered in 2021 because they're starting mid-year or throughout the year, the 2022 adjustment is an increase of $236,642. And I don't have a updated overall view of all the budgets for the 2022 budget. But that will be about a $4 increase per $500,000 household. So overall, and also because these budgets that you're looking at show a transfer to the surplus reserve fund, we could even reduce that transfer if the board desires. I feel like the operational surplus reserve fund now being at $307,833 is a pretty good place to be. But there is the option to reduce the transfer to that reserve in 2021, which was $114,000.
Go ahead, Director Birch Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Suzanne, I just want to make sure that, and thank you for this, that I'm following when you're talking about the reserve. Is this the idea of having a certain number of months available as a sort of contingency fund? That sort of Director Doug Race was, okay, okay, so that's good. And I'm following you and thank you.
Director Stoner, go ahead, and then I have Director DeMare.
Thank you. And on the operational reserve, I just, being relatively new here, I suspect that we have a guideline and a policy that sets where we would like that reserve to be at. So appreciate that we might be able to reduce our transfer there, but would we still be at our policy guideline for the reserve?
We currently don't meet the policy guideline. It's two months of operations is what the policy was approved at. And that's a large amount for a general government. And in my opinion, it's a little bit more than we need, I think, in operational reserve. So I think 300,000 is a good place to be, but for two months of operating, it would be, sorry, I have to get to that portion. $483,300 is two months of, based on 2021's operating. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Director Elliott. Oh, sorry, Director DeMare and then Director Elliott.
Yeah, I'm good with the, with the numbers that you've given us for the new positions. And actually, one of my questions I was going to have farther down as we went down was that operational reserve for it. And in it, you said that we needed, that we're $175,000 short. So you were planning to put another $114,000 in, in 2021 or 2022?
In 2022, I don't think I have anything transferred in. So the 2021 total transfer in is $114,000. And that's already baked into the budgets that you have in your agenda. There's no additional, there's no additional transfer. I was thinking maybe we could reduce that if the board wanted to, but I think that the operational reserve fund as it is, is a pretty good level.
Okay, so the, prior to the 114, then it was less than the 3,700?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Okay, so it's bumped it up to that?
Yeah, I think I don't think I transferred any funds in the first round of budgets. But because we had made some adjustments and I claimed a whole bunch of funding from the restart grant in this view of the budgets, I was able to then transfer some to the reserve.
Okay, that was one of my other questions, was that the restart plan, 150,000, so that's where some of that went?
Yeah, so I'll get into that right now. So I was able to find some specific expenses that could be, you know, recovered through the restart grant. And it ended up being 82,738 out of the 2020 budget that I claimed from the restart grant and 71,000 in 2021 that I claimed from the restart grant. And that's mostly for hardware, because any kind of hardware for meetings and working remotely can be covered. And then there's some other, you know, conference solutions, all of the Zoom meeting expenses can be covered. And some of the salaries that we actually worked before the provincial government led, released their task number weren't recoverable through the task, so I'm recovering them through the restart grant. And, yeah, and then in the 2021 budget, sorry, in the 2020 budget, I also attributed about 150,000 to go to the other services. So this, these figures that I just made out for you earlier, the 82,000 and the 71,000 are all from general government.
Good, thank you.
To save quite a bit of funds there.
Okay, I have Director Elliott and then Director Richmond.
My question was about the restart funds. And that I can see easily, general government, what you're allocating them for, but then it says 150,000 to other cost centers. And so where is that majority of the 150,000 going? And maybe in the next iteration of the budget, could we just see the COVID restart funds as their own section? So they're all there together?
Yeah, if I ever get that far. I haven't been able to get through all the services yet. But so that's just a plug right now, because
Okay, so I couldn't find that $150,000. That, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, so I just put, I just plugged that number in because basically with the budgets, without having to constantly amend them, I just thought I put a transfer so that, you know, when we do have the exact amount, but I will try to get the exact amount for all the services for next time.
Okay.
I'm thinking this, that we'll use some for transit, we'll use some for most likely recreation. And then there's other little things like the fire department's extra protocols. And there's also just the cleaning supplies, extra cleaning supplies at the landfill and the transfer stations and things like that. But I haven't gone through and fully exhausted the list yet.
Okay, thanks, Ms. LaFrance, because I was like scrolling through going, I can't find it anywhere. So that's helpful to know that I wouldn't be able to see it right now. The other thing I wanted to ask is, I don't know if this is the right time, but we're talking about a part-time person to work on the climate change file. I know we've been having trouble recruiting and I know that the cost of living is high. And so is it realistic to think we'll find someone part-time or should we look at making that a full-time role?
I don't know if we've actually started the recruitment for that as yet. I'm sorry, I'll have to relay this to Melanie here.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you. We have a job description that's in the final review stage that we're hoping to post. We have had discussion about that. Certainly, finding somebody on a part-time basis is much more challenging than finding a full-time or perhaps even something like an 80% position where people could say they're going to earn sufficient to live on but have a little bit more time. Some people might be receptive to that type of arrangement. But that was how much we had from the 2020 budget and we've, at this point, just kept it at that half-time. It is partly a question of what level of dedication the board would like to that initiative as well as the funding implications. But from a hiring perspective, definitely more hours would make it easier to find a high-quality candidate for the position. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I think that's something we should keep in mind and maybe cost out both scenarios, because I don't think climate is like a part-time job. It's, it's, it's an emergency and I think maybe our discussions around the strategic plan will help us hone our decision-making on that particular position a little bit more. But it might be a scenario we want to cost out for the next iteration of the budget. And finally, my last question, Chair, if you don't mind, is where'd it go? Oh, yes. So we have, and I might just not be connecting dots here. So we had this operational surplus reserve that was allocated $100,000 in 2019 for employee recruitment and retention. And it's at 82K remaining. And the spirit of that from the board at the time was like, get it spent and like, let's alleviate some of the pressure on staff. So that didn't happen. And so we're carrying it forward into 2021. But then I think we're using it for something else. So can you just help me connect the dots?
Yeah, so right now, those funds are all from the surplus reserve fund. So if we remove that completely, it wouldn't affect the bottom line, just so you guys know. But we could reduce it to what we think we're going to be needing. And so we could use it for additional, I don't know, relocation expenses that might happen or additional advertising in different areas that we might want to look at. So there is potential to reduce it. It wouldn't affect the bottom line, though. So it'll just reduce the transfer from the surplus operational reserve. So that reserve will increase, the balance will increase in 2021 if we do reduce that.
So Ms. LaFrance, could we use it to smooth the introduction of new salaries into the budget?
For sure, yeah. It could be anything operational, really.
So if we added new positions, we could just smooth it out so the tax hit isn't like this in 2021. We could sort of carry it through. So that is an option to us.
Yeah, we could even do that in 2022 when it'll be more of a tax hit. 2021 so far is pretty flat when you look at the tax rates anyway. The dollar value did increase, but with the tax and the assessment changes, it is pretty flat right now.
All right. Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay, Director Richmond, go ahead.
Thank you. So a couple of questions and I'm going to pick up on Karen's there because I had similar ones. So first of all, with the COVID recovery funds, the restart grant, I think you mostly answered it, Mr. France, but I just want to make sure. So with that $150,000 plug, do you feel that will be able to accommodate, you know, we spoke at PIVUS about the recreation, putting COVID start, restart funds towards recreation to smooth out that budget? Does that, will that allow for all that?
I'm hoping so. I'm still, like, when I get the updated budgets from the village of Pemberton, I can definitely double-check that what the actual amount will be, but I don't have a certain amount known yet for what we're going to be using for the rec budgets and also for the pool. So the Squamish Pool will also get some funding. And so I haven't gotten that far yet, but all I would do was, would just change that contribution from the grant and it wouldn't affect the bottom line in the budget. So once I finish all of the other services and know exactly what I need to transfer, I'll update that that amount in general government, but it doesn't affect the bottom line.
Okay, I just, I was a little concerned when I saw only $48,000 left in the grant remaining, and I wanted to make sure that that was covered, so.
Yeah, and that does include 150,000 in 2022 as well. So 150 in 2021 plugged and also 150 in 2022 just plugged.
Great, thanks. Once we have more info on that budget, it'll be, we'll be able to talk. You mentioned, just as a quick segue here, you mentioned transit. Transit shouldn't come out of the COVID restart. That's its own, it's got its own supporting funding, right?
Well, transit, because because the COVID restart grants can be used to service vulnerable populations, vulnerable persons. So you could argue that the transit funds, the transit service really does service vulnerable populations. So we were thinking of just putting an amount for that.
But are there not funds being made available to local government to support their transit systems in its own stream outside of the COVID restart? Like, we shouldn't have to touch, in my way of thinking, we shouldn't have to touch the COVID restart. We should be able to work out of the transit stream.
Well, there is no service for it for the SLRD, so that's the issue. Right now, we're using what's available with area C funds, which is amenity funds and select funds potentially. But that's not really appropriate. We should have a service for this transit. And then also, in the current state of the transit, I'm not sure we could create a service because we would need elector approval. And I don't know if area C residents would want to pay for a service that they're not really getting any service from currently. So that's the issue there, that the area C funding isn't ideal at the moment.
Right. I don't know if CL, Homer wants to throw some?
Yeah, go ahead to you, Homer.
Thank you, Chair. The one thing I would say there is that the municipalities are the contract holders and that there has been money that the province has committed to provide to each of the transit holders. And so I expect that that information will be made available before too long. And that when it is made available, any adjustments to anything that we're looking at at the RD side will reflect those commitments that were made. And if there are transit contributions that we would look to restart funds for, they would be initiatives that the RD is undertaking that relate to transit but are not a part of the specific transit service under that operating agreement where there's a separate pocket of funds. And the other thing, if I could share, is I ran the numbers for what Director Elliott was asking as well for the climate position. And if that position was to be made full-time instead of part-time, the impact would be just over $40,000 or approximately 55 cents per year on a $500,000 home. Thank you.
Chair, I've got a couple more for me.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I also was going to ask about the funds that we put aside for recruitment and retention. I feel like the intent behind those funds is starting to get covered through some of these additional hires that we're considering. So an HR person, clerk, that sort of thing to alleviate, you know, the capacity issues that we experience. So I was going to ask about those funds as well. It seemed to me that they're just kind of moving around. I don't want to leave taxpayers' money just sitting there not doing anything, nor do I want to spend it for nothing. But so similar questions to Director Elliott, which is, can we use it? I was thinking also more towards the 2022 budget to smooth that out or to keep our reserves at a certain level so that we can lessen the impact moving forward. So that, I guess, is more of a comment. And my last question is, Ms. LaFrance, just for clarity, when you took us through it, I had a little trouble following. When you took us through the tax implications, it came When you took us through the tax implications, it came to about $4 a person, $4 to $500,000 assessment in 2022, once those salaries are full-time, correct?
A $2, $500,000 assessment for just general government.
That's 2021, isn't it?
Sorry, that's 2021. Yeah, I don't have that for 2022, unfortunately.
I thought you said it was about $4.
But yeah, I'm assuming it's about $4 because it's double what the, it's double and a little bit what the 2021 increases. But it will also depend on assessments that will happen in 2022. But yeah, it'll be about $4, $4 is a good estimate.
And does that take into account if we don't have restart funds left for 2022? You know, as general government, like, right now, I feel like the general government is not jumping as much as it might because we have those restart funds. So I'm just wondering, when we're into a regular budget cycle in 2022, is that, and I get that it's an estimate, that $4 estimate, does that take into account the fact that we won't have the support of COVID restart funds?
Yeah, yes, yeah. So that's, so I went through all the budgets and the five-year span and updated for the new positions. And just going to get back there. The five-year increase, like 2022 increase with everything was 236,642. So that is without any restart grant as well.
Perfect, okay. So we're looking at, again, an estimate of $4 in 2021, $4 in general government for $500,000 in 2022. And then we'll see what the other budgets might add to that. So, okay, that's it for me, Chair, thank you.
And so, yeah, if we don't use any of that recruitment and retention funds, it always just transfers to the next year. It doesn't really go away. It's just budgeted from the operational reserve. And if it's not used, it'll just, we can just transfer it, or we can just remove it, or adjust the balance.
Thanks.
Any other questions at this time? Go ahead, Director Birchstones, and then Director Weep.
I have a number of notes. I'm not sure when, how we're going to process through the rest of Suzanne's presentation. But one, just speaking about that recruitment fund, when I looked, page 14, at the relocation expenses, I wondered if that was where we could redirect some of those recruitment funds that we set aside towards a housing benefit. It was just a comment there. As we have talked about, I mean, at one point, we were actually talking about renting housing. But a housing benefit as part of a recruitment package might be beneficial.
And I think that's a possibility. It would be a taxable benefit. So the, it would have to be, you know, created in our payroll system as a taxable benefit. But that's an option.
Did you want to ask your other questions now? Or did you want to wait as Suzanne goes through and you can ask as you go?
I think wait, thank you.
Okay, she'll probably answer many of your questions as we go. Director Weep, go ahead.
Seeing as I'm fairly new to the board, this might be a question that's already been answered. The recovery funds, when you talked about the PIVS fund and rec center funding and this, that, and the other, is Lilwet eligible for that as well? Or do we get separate recovery funds for that? Or do you even know?
I'm not sure. But municipalities also did receive the COVID restart grant. So I'm not sure how much, let's just District Lilwet received. But there are certain items you have to have, you have to allocate them to only certain things. So District Lilwet would benefit from the regional budget. So we're using it for general government. And you would benefit there. But it's not something I can just send to District Lilwet, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
I have Director Stoner, then Director DeMaire.
Thank you. Through the chair, just picking up something that Director Richmond mentioned in terms of the COVID restart grant. In general government, at least, when I look at this, the majority of the amounts that we're covering are really above and beyond what normal operations would be. So cleaning, hardware, they aren't necessarily reoccurring costs, or we aren't applying that funding to what we see as year-over-year costs. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Some operational costs are covered under the grant, like the Zoom licenses and things that you, some might view as recurring costs, but they are just new this year. So from 2022 and on, those costs will have to be absorbed through other means. But for the 2020, 2021 budget, we're using the funds. Thank you.
And Director DeMaire, go ahead.
Yeah, I can't remember which meeting it was, whether it was an EAD meeting or a board meeting. But we were going to get a copy of what the restart funds could be used for. So we still, I still don't know what they can be used for. So I think it would be good if we could get that, a copy of that, so that we could review them.
Yeah, that's definitely doable. I can do a report, which will show, hopefully by next board meeting, all of the transfers as well. And then I'll describe what the grant can be used for, if the board is okay with that.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? No? Okay. Let's carry on.
So I did add in to this budget, the Community Energy and Climate Action Plan. Originally, it was budgeted and planning. And we decided to move it to the general government budget because it didn't seem, didn't seem appropriate to be in planning. And so it doesn't actually change the overall view of the budget. So, but in between the budgets, the planning budget will now go down because of that 30,000 move, and the general government budget went up. And there is a change with the short-term loan. I didn't receive the final invoices for the office space renovation yet. So I did just move that short-term borrowing all to 2021 budget. So only 150,000 was borrowed in 2020. The first budgets that I showed you in December showed that this 350 was going to be borrowed in 2020. But I didn't receive the information. So now it shows 150 in 2020 and 200,000 being borrowed in 2021. And hopefully, we can get the remaining invoices as soon as possible. There's been an issue with contacting the contractor and receiving the final invoices.
All the work is done, right?
Yes, it's been completed, yeah.
Okay, just holdbacks and final, yeah.
Yeah, so I might have to accrue what I think the final invoices will be into the, these, the 2020 financials. But that'll be based on what my auditor requests have me to do.
Okay, any other questions about the short-term loan? Okay. There we go, thank you.
Okay. And I did adjust down the 50-year anniversary cost. So originally, it was $14,000 being carried forward. I just reduced it down to 5,000 in case we wanted to do something more with the 50-year. We could always remove that as well, but I just kept it as $5,000. And there was a couple errors that I corrected from the first version that you saw in December. I had an extra $50,000 in revenue by accident for this FCM grant that I've corrected in this version. And I also had doubling up of some invoices between software and support. So those are, those are now fixed in this version. It's the one benefit of going through these every, every month. And I think that's all for what I wanted to go over. If anybody has specific questions on the general government budget, then we can move to the planning budget.
Any questions burning before we move on to planning? Go ahead, Director Birchstones.
Just a comment to say I'm really happy to see the NDIS intern is optimistically budgeted there. Thank you.
Okay, let's carry on then to planning.
Okay, so with planning, like I mentioned, the Climate Action Plan has been removed from the budget. It was originally budgeted in 2019, and so in 20, I'm sorry, 2020. So in 2021, I've moved that. And the remainder of the rezoning application fees has been updated. The Wedge Woods Affordable Housing has been removed. We went through, me and the Director of Planning went through whether we should resend back the funds. And there is no, there is no mechanism for us to send those back. So those are being, those additional fees are being absorbed now into the budget. And overall, this, so the requisition for this budget has decreased, which basically just offsets the general government budget. And I talked to the Director of Planning about using those application fees to offset salaries. And yes, we do do that. But we are keeping some carryforward in case in 2021, we do have to go to outsourced contracts. So we just keep carrying forward those amounts. And any questions on the planning budget?
Go ahead, Director Rainbow.
Suzanne, could you just sort of explain a little bit more about what you just said about Wedge Woods and about fees that were collected? And do I understand that they were unspent and that we can't return them?
That's right. So there's fees based on a bylaw. And we received, in the budget here, we received 24,500. And besides staff time, there was only $1,000 used. And I believe that was for some legal costs. Let me just double-check. But so, yeah, there is some, in the first budget iteration, there was some transferring over to 2021. But Kim mentioned that that project is now completed. And we looked at the bylaw, and there is no mechanism to refund these funds.
We can't even do that by a special resolution?
Potentially, I'm not sure. I know that you're not supposed to waive fees and things like that for just normal, right? Regulation allows you not to waive any fees, like building permits and things like that. So we'd have to maybe get a legal opinion, just to make sure that we can send these funds back if we wanted to.
Well, I, I would think that we should look at that. I don't, I don't understand how we can assess a really high fee, not use any of it, or not use very much of it, and then say, sorry, we're going to keep it. It doesn't, that doesn't seem right to me. I can see how the money would have been used if we'd have gone on past first reading and so on and so forth, but, boy.
I have CAO Helmer, and then Director Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to mention that the fees in the bylaw are set with the anticipation that they would cover cost and that they fall in line with our objective, that we don't want to put the costs of future development on the existing taxpayers, but the future development should bear the costs associated with their development. So they are set at that level. And on occasion, with some projects, we may actually come in a little bit under. In other projects, we may actually go over. But that was the logic behind where we have set our bylaw fees, so that we do allow the developers, through their application process and the fees associated, to cover the costs that are associated with developments. Go ahead, Director Elliott.
I guess respectfully through the chair, there's risk in speculating on land development. And I don't think that that's our responsibility. We've set fair fees. And sometimes your project goes ahead, sometimes it doesn't. But I agree with the philosophy behind the fees and how they were set that our CAO just explained.
Go ahead, Director Rainbow.
Well, I shall also say with respect that it seems to me that that fee is set on the assumption, it's set high enough on the assumption that the project will proceed. But if, if, if we cut something off at first base, clearly, we've assessed an amount which is far in excess of what we actually need. I mean, if you think that that's okay, and that's just part of a developer's risk, I just don't, I don't agree with that.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Director DeMaire.
Just curious, because I'm new to all this. In that bylaw, or when the agreement was, the bylaw agreement was signed with the developer, was there anything stated in there that if it didn't move forward, that they would not get money returned? It would seem to me that that would be the logical thing to do if that was the case.
Yeah, there is no mechanism within the bylaw for reimbursement of those fees.
No, but what I'm getting at is it's stated in there so that they know that if it doesn't go through first reading, that they won't get any of their money back.
Oh, you mean, like, for the application?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm not sure about that. I can pose that question to Planning, Director of Planning.
I saw a hand from Director Richmond.
I would just support the fact that developers view this as a cost of doing business. You come forward with an application to municipality, they, we all have our costs to recover. Fees are charged, like with any business. Sometimes those fees are used a little more, a little less, as the CEO explained to us. And it also, you know, we would, we run the risk here if we start setting this precedent of having everybody asking us for a refund for, you know, and staff would be evaluating and bringing to the board whether those are justifiable cases. We have a policy around it. As stated, sometimes it goes above, sometimes it goes below. The policy was designed to protect the taxpayer so that the taxpayer is not paying the cost of development speculation. And again, I think developers view this as a, as a cost of doing business. So I, I would say it's an on-issue at this point. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's carry on unless there are other questions or comments at this time regarding the planning. Seeing none, let's go ahead.
Okay, so that would be all I would want to discuss with planning. Everything else remains the same as per the last iteration. So with the regional solid waste, the only change was the operational transfer. So the operational reserve balance now totals 143,823, which does exceed the reserve guidelines recommended balance. So there's been not a lot of changes with the solid waste management plan. But if anybody has any specific questions on the operations, I see Angela and Mary Lou now are part of the meeting.
A question from Director Richmond. And welcome both Ms. Belsham and Ms. LeBlanc, and Director Birchstones, I'll have you next. Go ahead, Director Richmond.
Thanks. Questions not directly about operations? It's just, it's common to both this cost center and the last one. We have a number of cost centers that were above our recommended reserve guideline policy. So I'm just wondering if, as part of this, at the end of all this, you know, and recognizing that, I was confused because I know finances work differently at the RDs. So I don't know what we're allowed to move around. But with these reserves, I'm just wondering if reserves, I'm just wondering if we're going to look at the opportunity to flatten the budget in some, some other areas or looking again ahead to 2022. So just a general question for Suzanne on those, on those reserves that are above our policy guideline.
So these being not statutory reserves, there is an opportunity to transfer them as long as they are exactly the same participants in each service. So at the Cedar Sky Trails, for example, we wouldn't be able to transfer because it doesn't have exactly the same participants and same with the regional growth strategy. But the regional waste management does have the exact same participants as general government. So that is the potential. Right now, this, the Waste Management Operational Reserve is going to be used to offset taxation and it would be doing the same thing in general government. So I don't see an issue if that's something the board is, wants to review further.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Director Elliott.
I guess along the same questions as, as Director Richmond. Can you read? Okay. Is, would we use it to boost any of those projects to help us aggressively implement the solid waste resource management plan? So if we were to move the reserve down, where would we invest that money?
So as far as I know, we've added the expenses that we see as appropriate in that budget already. But potentially there's opportunities to increase those expenses if, if Angela and Mary Lou think that there's potential for more aggressive implementation.
I'm seeing nodding heads. I wonder if they have any thoughts on it.
Hi, thank you. There's always more opportunity to bring projects ahead. For 2021, we want to take time for that new communication outreach employee to get the time to have a good understanding on the issues and what can be possibly done. Obviously with COVID, it's always an issue doing outreach and more projects. But in 2022, we will be able to bring some additional projects in, in regards of the solid waste management plan and obviously with the objective of targeting and really increasing the diversion within the original district.
Thank you. I just, I want to make sure that we're balancing the funds we have with the capacity that's there and what's realistic this year. But I just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
Director Birchstones.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, it was very similar was if there was some way that we could use some of those funds towards enhancing that program. So thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? We have the experts here. Oh, Director DeMare, go ahead.
Just looking at it, it says that Operational Reserve Balance totals 143,000, which exceeds the reserve guidelines. What are, how much is it over the guideline?
It's just 40,000. Oh, sorry. It's about 100,000 over. So with this operational estimate, so with the reserve guidelines, you have to look at the budget and estimate the full year and then take two months of that is what the guideline wants you to reach. So with the special projects, for example, the Cedar Sky soils, infrastructure, all those items that aren't through taxation, I don't include in the, the operating expense. So it's for this cost center, the full two months is only 40,895. And there's 143,000 right now. So it's about 100,000 over what the guidelines recommend.
Thank you.
Director Richmond, go ahead.
So I was gonna, but we mentioned maybe having, for the next look at the budget, having a breakout of the reserves, what the suggested number is or according to the policy and where we might have access to that. And that way we can discuss as a board whether we want to use it and move it forward, whatever. But maybe if we're able to look at that as a whole, I would appreciate that if that's okay. And Mr. France?
So I do have that at the very back of the budget report listing of all of the funds. Let's see here. So it's on page it's on page six of the start of my report and it just shows all of the balances, the recommended guideline recommended balance and then the variance.
There, there's no page numbers when you're on the Hotmail agenda. So I'm just, I looked for it before I asked the question because I thought it was here and I couldn't find it and I'm still not finding it. So I don't have page.
It's right before the actual budget. So the first page of the budget being the overall tax implication, it's, it's right before that.
Perfect. That's what I was looking for. Thank you very much.
And I just wanted to reiterate that the regional growth strategy, the Cedar Sky Trails wouldn't be applicable to transfer to and from. But did everybody want to go over that right now? The Operational Reserve Budget compared to the guidelines?
Sure. Oh, Director Birchstones, do you have a question?
Just trying to make sure I'm on the right page. Are we back then, we're back to the beginning with general government? Or tell me where you're at Suzanne, if you don't mind.
So it's page six of just my agenda item and it's before the consolidated version of the tax implementation. So it's before the actual budgets. It's just the, the end of my notes.
Okay.
It's a small, small graph.
Yeah, on my PDF, it's page 16 of the full agenda.
Thank you. There we go.
Okay, so it shows general government as being under 175,446. It shows land planning and zoning being over about 15,797. Regional growth strategy, which wouldn't be applicable to move because it's not all the same participants as Area A doesn't participate, is 34,992 over. There's the regional solid waste, which is 102,931 over 102,000. There is potential that we could use more of those funds in 2021 as, as Mary Lou was just discussing. And then Cedar Sky Trails is also not applicable to transfer as it's not exactly the same participants and that's 215,000 right now. I didn't put this as compared to the recommended guidelines because this is really just for trail building. It's not the same, it's not the same operations in, in this service. So I just assume that this is going to be used for future trails and not to be transferred. And the regional transit has 21,000 and there is no regular operation. So I didn't have anything to really base that off of.
Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead, Director Richmond.
So thanks for that, Mr. France. You know, when I look at those, I, and I don't think we need to make a decision on it now. I think we've done a good job building up reserves and I certainly don't want to whittle them down. I would like us to consider when we move through the budget, maybe not at this point, what if this extra reserve, so, so to speak, we could either use to flatten the budget or carry forward to next year when we're maybe more concerned about tax increases? If our budget's looking fairly flat this year and/or as Director Elliott said, if within, you know, I, I wouldn't want to drain or I wouldn't want to balance them all out necessarily. I feel like trails, regional waste, those are, you know, transit, maybe those are sort of cost centers where there is the potential for wanting to promote a project or match a grant or that sort of thing. So I, I see the, I see the benefit of having a little more than the guideline in there. R G S and I would look to staff, although we don't have Kim with us, but you know, I don't know if that's, to me, that feels different. I don't see there being unexpected costs coming up that we need that extra reserve for. So I'd like to consider how we could use that. And I guess Suzanne, with that in mind, regional growth strategy, like you said, we couldn't move that around. But we can still reduce taxation within the budget by, by using those reserves, could we not? Okay. So yeah, I'd like us to consider those options as we move through the, through the budget, what more we can promote and what we can save. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you have a good point that, you know, next year it might be even more appropriate to really get those operational reserve funds where we need them and to use them to offset those new higher salaries that for the full year, because right now those new positions will only be a partial hit to the budget. For R G S, because it doesn't include Area A and right now we have, I think, only a $5,000. Sorry. Yeah. So it's a $5,844 requisition. And I do think in the five-year plan, if everybody wants to go to the R G S budget, I'll have to make my way there too. In the five-year plan, I do use the transfer, the reserve, Operational Reserve, and I transferred it in throughout the budget to keep that requisition at that same low level. You could see in 2019, it was a $31,000 requisition. So it is being utilized, but it still shows a fairly high balance. Oh, I think it's actually messed up. Oh dang it. Sorry, my, my formula is not correct here. Sorry, I'll have to fix this in the next budgets, but the ending Operational Reserve Budget at 2025 would be 14,000. It mistakenly shows 19,000, 28,000 in your budgets. That Operational Reserve calculation got messed up and I apologize for that. So it would be 14,178 at the end of 2025, just keeping that requisition at that low level.
Director DeMare, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the one piece that I think as we move forward in 2022 or 2023 is that fire chief position, which I remember was around 113,000 a year. So that isn't in in the calculations that we got earlier for the increases to the, the tax impact. So just looking ahead, whether it's 2022 or 2023, when, when we move forward on the fire chief, just think about some of these reserves and where, where it could be used.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Where would you like to go next?
Sorry about that. So we kind of touched on R G S. We could maybe go there now. So I didn't change anything other than the transfer to Operational Reserve. So what I, what that means is I adjusted the 2020 actuals to what we're being, to what actually happened. And then I always adjust the transfer to and from Operational Reserve as, as a balancing figure. And I think that there was just a slight increase in the request for the contracted services by Kim. So that R G S monitoring should happen in 2021 due to all of the unexpected issues with the COVID and we haven't really done that in 2020. There's been not a lot of action on the R G S in 2020. So you'll see all that in 2021. And so there's nothing really else to discuss on the R G S unless somebody has any other questions. Seeing none, we can go to the Cedar Sky Trails budget, which would be the final. I guess we can actually go to the regional transit planning. We kind of skipped over that one. And I added in the new resolution for the additional contracts, but I, I'd read the resolution wrong and I do have to adjust that for the additional participating. I just put $2,000 extra from A R C Immunities, but there is the whole resolution stated that there's other participants that are, that I didn't include. So I'll have to adjust that for next. It won't actually affect the bottom line. It's just more transfers in from the other services. And so nothing really much to discuss on the regional transit unless there's something specific about the projects that somebody wants to discuss.
Go ahead, Director Elliott.
So we have that $50,000 sitting there and we know regional transit is, is on our strategic plan. And so I think the board put that there to try and make sure that it was a big focus of someone's and not off the corner of staff's desk, which is what's happening in the R M O W in the District of Squamish to try and, and further this along is that we have staff that are, are trying to model this and work with the province. And I think the board's intent was to use S L R D funds to have someone who's knowledgeable about how these systems get built and how they can be funded to help direct our advocacy. And so now we've got mandate letters that are suggesting maybe it's going to be a translink model or perhaps it stays within M O T I. It's gotten complicated. And so I think we either need to use these funds this year or we should repurpose them. If people don't think this is the way to proceed and, and perhaps C A O Helmer, that's a conversation that we need to have at a staff level to understand what's the best way that staff think we should proceed. So I guess I, you know, I think the board put it there thinking that was a good use of funds, but I'm, I'm open to repurposing it if that's the, not the best way to proceed.
Go ahead, C A O Helmer.
Thank you, Chair. I would just respond that there was a report brought to the board to look at a grant opportunity that we were looking to explore, but we did not have sufficient time in that window to reconvene the transit partners and look at that opportunity. But we're hopeful that that would come around again. And what that would do is it's actually a consultant that was willing to look at what are the current services, transit and otherwise transportation related across the region. Put all those pieces together into one picture, identify gaps, identify recommendations for funding such a service to fill the gaps and what that would look like and how the governance associated with that could look as well. So if, if that opportunity were to arise, I think that's a dialogue that we could be having at the Regional Transit Committee level about whether that's a direction that makes sense to all of the partners and to get sort of that big picture on transit across the region as to what everybody has and what more would be. as to what everybody has and what more would be most beneficial in a prioritized fashion. So I've definitely heard the comments from Director Elliott and that makes sense. And perhaps this conversation, those two aspects could be discussed at Regional Transit Committee and then it could come back to the board for further consideration, if that's agreeable. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I see Director Richmond, then Director Rainbow.
Thanks for that, CEO Helmer. That's helpful. I also think that 50,000 should be used towards some dedicated hours, staff contract or whatever that looks like to move this forward. In our strategic planning, when we were talking, we said we'd reconvene the Transit Committee as soon as we can, or the, yeah, the committee. And so we'll have that discussion there. But I think as Director Elliott said, it's being worked on by staff at other municipalities off the side of the desk, as it is yours, CEO Helmer. So I totally agree that now's the time to direct those funds and to push this forward. So I guess it's, it'll be up to the committee to discuss and bring back here.
Okay, Director Rainbow, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. I was just saying, I'm sorry I missed the meeting last week. And if this was already covered in that meeting, then I apologize. We call this the regional transit planning. Our work to date was mostly See the Sky. There's a subregion interest from Lilowet in having transit, having some kind of service between Lilowet and the See the Sky corridor. And so I just wonder if that is actually, if we do intend to move in that direction. We are, and I think we definitely should.
Director Damar, go ahead.
Very similar to our area. You know, we do have some vulnerable people in the valley and maybe a bus or some type of transport once a week to Lilowet. Just something to think about when we review all this.
Okay. Director Burt Jones, go ahead.
Maybe expanding the little owl service, bus service, Sal out to Goldbridge is a possibility. And also I have been lobbying to increase the health bus service, but that of course goes in the Camelot's direction. Yes, we'd like to be at least an addendum on there somehow or other.
Okay. I think what I hear is that there's a strong desire for us to have this conversation in our strategic planning and make a firm plan to use those funds to benefit the whole region. Any further comments or questions? No? Okay. Let's put that in the parking lot until this afternoon. Go ahead.
We can move to See the Sky Trails budget. So this is the first view for all of you for the See the Sky Trails. I did recover a small amount for the COVID restart grant for social distancing signs, but it was very minor. It was only $77. The service site maintenance line 50670 is increased slightly due to the addition of Gords Trail. And the Friendship Trail off-ramp, I'm just awaiting all the invoices from the Village of Pemberton for that. I think it's been completed and Allison has mentioned that it's been completed. And so there's some resolutions are just being carried forward until they can be, until we have the actual cost of those and we can adjust them. So the resolutions were actually from June 2019 and it's about $69,000. And that'll depend on the, because there was a shared cost for this Friendship Trail. So we would want to see the full, the full package, the full project cost. And then based on the resolution, we would post the exact amount. But for now, it's just transferring forward. It also includes a transfer to the operational reserve of $55,000, leaving the balance at 215,000. And that will be for future additions to the CSF trail. We've been trying to find grants to offset the trail and that could be, that would supplement the grant revenue. Any questions on specifics of the See the Sky Trail budget?
Director Elliott, go ahead.
I understood that our restart funds could be used for active transportation. So I'm wondering if there's any sort of small.
Karen, we just lost your audio. Doesn't look like you're muted, but we cannot hear you.
Maybe leave the meeting and come back, Karen. So I just wanted to just touch on that, what I heard from Karen. And that used for transportation.
Sorry, just one second. Let's hear.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you now. That was weird.
That was really weird.
Okay.
Okay, so first part was the restart funds. I think they can be used for active transportation. And are there any small projects in the See the Sky Trails that, you know, are things we would like to fix or little links we want to do? So not, you know, not a massive section, but are there, are there ways in which we could use the restart funds to help improve areas of the existing trail that have shown up over the years?
I don't, I don't believe it can be used for just active transportation. When I'm looking at the details of what the provinces just said were eligible costs, it basically says addressing revenue shortfalls, facility reopening and operating costs, emergency planning and response costs by law enforcement, protective services costs, computer and other technology costs and services for vulnerable persons and other related costs. You could argue that it is a service for vulnerable persons. It might be a stretch because, you know, it's, it's an open, it's an open transportation trail for everybody. So there's potential, but I'd have to really prove that out before I would say yes. And that there is more information about this COVID restart grant that keeps coming up. A lot of the financial officers are constantly talking about it and trying to find additional uses. So I can, I can actually pose the question to the finance officers that I, we have like an email that we all participate in. And there's also the JFOA forum and see if they're using it for active transportation.
I think I saw a hand from Director Richmond.
So I had the same conversation and the one sort of not loophole, but thing we were told might fit in there, Mr. France would be parking for access to trails, that sort of thing to make trails more accessible. You know, that's what I was told. I don't know if it fits in perfectly. And along those lines, I met with the builder for Gords Trail and the Rock Garden all up there. And Director Mack, it's Danny Schrems and Director Mack, I think he was going to reach out to you and Director Crompton, I think he was going to reach out to you for the other side of the trail. But, you know, to make the access in the parking area on either side of Gords Trail and the Rock Garden more accessible. It's a smallish project. I'm talking $5,000 probably on either side. So anyway, this is something I was, I was going to ask as well is if restart funds could be used for that? Could we, could we look at projects like that? So I don't know if you've heard from Director Crompton, but apparently he's coming your way.
I will look for him.
So to respond to that, I'll just have to double check because not, the information that I have, it doesn't state active transportation or trails or parking, but I'll definitely double check and post the question out to all the peers. And if there isn't any other questions around the See the Sky Trails budget, and I'll get the full spreadsheet done for next, for the February meeting, that big spreadsheet that shows what's still to come for the full plan. And I didn't have time to get that from Allison this month.
Okay, Director Elliott, go ahead.
Can I just go backwards for a second? I'm just reflecting on the conversation around regional transit. So do all electoral areas and communities pay into the regional district? Or regional district, regional transit fund?
They do. Yeah, it's, it's everybody.
Yeah. So it's interesting because the regional transit discussion was created because the BC Transit, Transit Future Plan is based on the three southern communities, Pemberton, Whistler and Squamish. And so I think because they gathered input from the public, from those three communities, by default, that's kind of where the focus went. And so all we need to do is figure out like how BC Transit and which future plan is looking at the northern section. And we've got to make those two things talk to each other. So I think that's, it just drove it by default rather than any decision on the part of, of the board. So it's a good conversation to have in our strategic planning about how we start to take a regional approach.
That's a really good point because just thinking about the logistics of, well, and even every session we attended regarding regional transit, Areas A and B and Lilowet were not, like it was, it's logistically difficult to carry on. But I think it's worthwhile having the conversation. Any other comments or questions? No? Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll also bring next month the non-market change review. I didn't quite get to that as well. And so it'll kind of be hand in hand with the assessment change. You'll be able to see the additional tax base that could absorb any additional tax increase. And I think that's, that's all I have for the budgets.
All right. I like this process. I find it much more manageable to eat the elephant one bite at a time. And any other questions, wrap-up comments? Quiet. All right. CEO Helmer, did you want to make some final remarks at this time?
Thank you, Chair. I think Ms. Lefkorn has covered it well and that we'll bring back the next iteration for your further consideration.
Okay, so thank you for your time today. And we, I guess, is there a resolution at this point? Or this is for information and we will pick this conversation back up at the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can approve them at this point.
No. Okay. Great. So shall we just move along in the agenda? Director Clark, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Can we just have a motion to receive the report?
Okay, moved by Director Damar, seconded by Director Weeb. Further discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries? Okay. And I guess we'll move along to directors' reports. Oh, you know what? Let's circle back. Director Crompton, are you ready for your regional moment?
I am, I think. Where did that go? Here it is.
Are you just going to run the clip that we had on global TV last night?
Yeah, I thought that'd be a good idea. You guys, actually, what we're going to do for the, for the regional moment is that I'd like you all to take out your Facebook and I'd all, like you all to write nasty notes to me if you could. And then I will receive them. I will internalize them and then I will share with you my thoughts. Does that sound like a good idea? No?
That's a dangerous idea.
Okay. So I should share screen? Share screen? Are we ready? Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. I haven't got any sound. Does?
There's no sound.
No sound.
Well, I have sound. Isn't that strange? Huh. Isn't that weird? Why would I be able to hear it, but none of you would?
That is weird. Do you want to share the link to Kristen or Melanie and they can share it?
Sure. That is very, very strange. I'll share it to everybody. I'm pleased to share it to everybody. I will give up screen sharing. I already have. So just as it's getting ready and hit play whenever, whoever, Kristen or Melanie, whoever's working on it. We were approached by the Squamish Cultural Center to partner on some work around land acknowledgements. We were approached by the Squamish Cultural Center to partner on some work around land acknowledgements and what they mean. I think one of the things that we do, and I think it's important, is a land acknowledgement, but understanding what it is and, and, and why we do it has been something that a lot of people ask. And a lot of people come to Whistler from around the world and they have someone stand in front of them and talk about the Squamish Nation, Lewa Nation, and, and that context isn't there in the same way. And so I want to, I will keep doing this until such time as there is a video playing. But, oh, here we go. Looks like Kristen has it. Yeah, there's no audio there either. That is extremely strange. Weird. How about this? This doesn't matter. Why doesn't everybody open that link? Press play, watch that video, turn your cameras off, come back in five minutes when you've watched the video. See you at 1:00 or 10:35. Watch that video. You don't need my face. It's on the, it's in the chat window, Tony. Oh, just click it and hit play, but you're probably going to want to put mute on so that we're not all broadcasting it to each other.
That was really good.
All right, did everyone have a chance to watch it? Okay. So if you have a chance to read Heather Paul's blog that is a compendium to it, where she kind of goes through the why on, on the, the video, but then also on, one of the things I think she says so great in the blog post is, but I need a, she, she says, but I need the language for a land acknowledgement in a meeting I'm having. And she, and she says, "The whole point of this is that you don't just cut, come here to clip and paste some words to be at the top of your agenda, but that you interact with what is actually happening and what we are doing." And I think it's, it's been really an interesting process. Heather worked at the RMOW for 20 years before she moved over to become the Executive Director of the Squamish Cultural Center. And that's been a really unique and interesting partnership that's grown since that move, I think. And so for the month of January, unfortunate, based on COVID context, we invested in a month of free admission for anybody that wanted to come to the Squamish Cultural Center as a way for our community to engage and understand and learn. I think we'll do it again because we didn't really get any use of it because everyone was having to be in their homes and be away. But that has been positive. And we're seeing more and more representation and engagement from both nations in our community in economic development. So they're doing, they are, they now have, the Lewa have a gas station site right on the corner of Function Junction that is going to be coming forward for development, we hope soon. As part of our agreement on the OCP, the nations now share a large chunk of land in Cadenwood that's on Whistler Mountain that they will be developing. And there's exciting partnerships moving forward that I'm pleased and proud to, 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 to be a part of. I would also say that we're really turning our minds and, and sorry, moving on from the land acknowledgement and from the relationships with the, the nations. One of the things that we're really putting our minds to right now is how do we respond as a tourism community in our current context and then after? One of the things that we saw a lot, and I've talked to you all a lot about in the summer, was this huge amount of visitation to our community in the middle of a time where the demands that are on us to do things that we've never done before, like keep, keep people separate from each other and keep our parks, people spaced on beaches. It's such a strange concept to have here, people wandering around and trying to keep people apart. But in my view, we've got this overarching theme of how do we respond well in the midst of large numbers of people in our community? Pre-COVID, during COVID and post-COVID? And how do we deliver a tourism experience that resonates with us as a community? That serves us as people who live in that community, who cares for the land, who serves and cares for the people who have been there for time immemorial? And how do we do that in a way that we feel good about? And, and the, the term that's been used a lot is regenerative tourism. What does it mean that we regenerate, that we serve, that it's not something that is consumptive? But it's something that is in service of Whistler and Whistlerites? That concludes the regional moment from my perspective. Counselor Ford, Chair Ford, I apologize. Do you have anything to add to our regional moment?
No, thank you. You did a great job. Question, Director Rainbow.
Thankfully, you're muted, so none of us can hear you, which is nice, I'll say.
Sorry to disappoint you, but I, I was, I was actually saying that I thought that was an excellent job and, and something that's really needed. I, I was asked to emcee a festival in Vancouver more than 10 years ago and the organizers gave me a script and, and wanted me to acknowledge that we were on the unceded territories of two or three nations in, in the Vancouver area. And I can remember reading that and thinking, what, why am I doing this? And why did we want to do that? It was the first time I'd ever come across it. I'd never heard anybody say anywhere else. And it was really quite powerful. And during that festival, there were a lot of people, it started conversations. It, it, so it achieved its end. And unfortunately, I think since then, it's become a mantra, you know, it's just something that people say at the beginning of meetings. And, and I don't think we really pay that much attention to it anymore. We, we might, but I, I suspect the public, a lot of members of the public don't, don't understand why it's being said. And, and so to, to see that video and to, you know, for you to establish that sort of context and to really bring it alive, I, I think is very important. And I, you know, congratulations on, on the people that put that together. It was excellent. And, and I think what we need to do is recognize that saying what we say at the beginning of meetings is, I agree, a first step. It's something, it's an acknowledgement. It's not reconciliation in itself. It's a first step towards that. And that what our next step should be to, to think about, how do we sort of move from there to actually doing things which really do promote reconciliation? So thank you once again.
Thanks, Tony.
Any other comments? Director Elliott, go ahead.
The really interesting learning for me was the word traditional and whether to include it or not. And it is just their territory. So I'm, I'm taking that back into my organization. I've already forwarded the blog post to my staff. So it's, it's always great to be part of the learning journey. So thank you for sharing that. And I also want to acknowledge the start of your regional moment where you, and Jess suggested we all send nasty notes to you on Facebook. And I just want to acknowledge your leadership through a really challenging time when I, I'm sure the anxiety in your community is high. And so thank you for your calm and also sense of humor and also relying on experts to help guide your response. As a tourism-based, tourism-based community, it is not easy to not invite people to your community. And I know you're doing a delicate dance between helping your local community and businesses and respecting public health orders and also being inundated by lots of folks from the lower mainland. So I recognize the dance you're in and thanks for your leadership.
Thank you, Karen. Means a lot.
Thank you. Any final questions or comments for the regional moment? Thank you very much. That was excellent. Let's move on to 6.1 Chair's verbal update. The only thing that I have for the verbal update is to invite everyone that is interested that next week, February 3rd and 4th is the Local Government Leadership Association Annual Conference. It is virtual. They've extended the registration date to tomorrow. And it is exceptional value, really, really interesting lineup of topics being discussed. And if you register, but you're unable to attend the session, you do get to view it afterwards. So there's a lot of good information that you can store away and watch when you have some time, if you can't attend live. So I do recommend that for anyone who's interested. Anyone else want to add anything to the verbal? No? Okay.
In, in, in educational parlance, with reference to the Whistler Regional Moment, I think you exceeded expectations.
Thank you.
I got to a lot of NIs in elementary school.
Yeah. There you are. You've grown, you've progressed.
Thank you for that. Any late business? No? Okay. Can I have someone move adjournment of this meeting? Moved by Director Stoner, seconded by Director Rainbow. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Director Clark, I will ask that you direct us to the next step, please.
Sure, thanks, Chair. So we are reconvening in our open meeting. So on your open board agenda, I just at item 17 there, which is the recommendations from the Committee of the Whole, of which there are none.
All right.
And next is a motion to go into closed.
Can I have someone move that we go into closed? Moved by Director Stoner, seconded by Director DeMare. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now we need a 10-minute recess to remove the